We will build my own competition today.
No.
That's it.
On the greens.
You look at the other way.
He said if there would be something.
Views.
Larry Hill, right?
I have to think about it.
No, he told them about it this morning.
This morning?
Yeah.
The water gushing.
He is some big engineer than he thinks he is.
Is seven in the clock?
Let's stand in, uh, row call.
Here. Close your seat, Steve.
Let's stand in row call.
Russell?
Here.
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 Okay.
Now, let's stand for the invitation.
We let us pray. Heavenly Father, again, we thank you for this day and for all the blessings that you give us every day, Lord. We ask special blessings for our mayor and her husband as they go through their trying times, Lord. We ask now that you bless this council, bless all that are here. Give us all of our sins, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We worship God.
United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Texas flag, flag of allegiance to the Texas state, under God, one and indivisible.
He has other places to go on Tuesday night. Our night is Monday night. Okay, citizens comments, do we just have one?
Joe Dolan, 10751, State Highway 34. I want to inform you of something that I learned at Bonham Commissioners Court. They stated there that in five to 10 years, that all groundwater, well water, is going to be so salty that nobody's going to be able to drink it. I do not know why they said that, I'm just letting you know, that's what they said. So, I think we need, we need to find out more about it, and that's something to keep in the back of your mind for what we have to do in the future. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
What?
Did the letters go out to the surrounding cemetery landowners?
I, I wasn't aware.
What did you send?
Huh?
What did you send?
Oh, he just sent.
Just a second, please.
It's off my phone.
I should have branded it, but I didn't.
We need to put up a sign.
Just hold me a second.
He, he sent a map, and I will, I'll print that out and have it left up here. I'm sorry I didn't.
You can send it to me if it's in your phone.
Yeah, I can do that. I'll just send the whole link.
Okay.
Uh, what he's saying is, traveling north on Stevens Street, from the intersection with West Bonham, the abandonment of North Stevens begins at a point adjacent to the northeast corner of property ID 89883, then in northeast direction to the property line of property ID 89735, which is the Ladonius Cemetery. Then north from the property line of ID 89735, along the west boundary with Ladonius Cemetery to the end point where the road bed is shown on the entrance that returns to the east. The abandonment includes all of North Stevens Street inside the Ladonius Cemetery. Says a city may want to post a sign at the entrance to the cemetery on North Stevens Street stating no through traffic or cemetery traffic only.
There's already signs posted to that.
Right, and so, from what I gather here, he is putting all this in place.
So he's, do you know if he sent out the letters to?
To, I don't know, this does not state that, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I'll send you that if you like.
Yeah, I need it for our records.
Yeah.
Okay, minutes for the December 27, 2022 meeting.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Russell?
Aye.
Uh, Deishu? Aye. Greg?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Financial report of December 2022.
Okay, excuse me.
Financial report of December 2022.
When he made his motion, he motioned.
He made a motion for all three.
For the consent agenda.
For the consent agenda.
So move to the information reports.
So we can move on? Yes, ma'am.
You don't know that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, information reports, Volunteer Fire Department.
Chief's report for December 2022, total calls 11, medical calls 6, grass fires 1, accidents 3, no structured fires, no mutual aid, smoke involvement 1, no control burns, no other, volunteer hours 23.03, water usage 0. In the month of December, we had two nights of training and one business meeting. The Ladonius Volunteer Fire Department awarded Battalion Chief Daniel Hall with Firefighter of the Year plaque. Also Chief Stark was elected chief for 2023. February 4th will be the Ladonius Volunteer Fire Department Annual Chili Cook Off. Signed, Cal Stark, Chief Ladonius Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then administrative department. The first day to file application for place on the ballot is set 12/19/22, and the last day to file is on the ballot is February 17/22. I think we're saying 3.
I'd like to check that date because I think it's wrong. The December date, I think is wrong.
I thought we always did it.
I think 18 is what I saw.
That's what I thought.
Do you want one?
So.
And that should be 23, not 22.
Right.
At 5:00 P.M. So we say 4, 1. Oh, no, that's 23.
For the May 20, 2023 election. The Ladonius Volunteer Fire Department Chili Cook Off is going to be on the 2nd, 4th, and 23rd at 3:00 P.M. at the fire station. And for the mayor's status updates, public works. We, does anybody have a re, uh, not a reason, had a question about what's going on in public works, because I, I don't know what you're really wanting.
Well, we used to get a public works report of water meter installs and replacements and...
Oh, so that's what you're wanting. Okay, well, I don't know of any. Have we had any installs?
No, we just had some workshops changed out.
Yeah, that's what he told me today, he's doing. It's, uh, I guess we can go back and start if that's what you're, uh, wanting, and start doing that. Okay, inspection permit resources, I guess that's what we're going to talk about later with the Bureau of Veritas, correct?
One more time?
That was the last meeting.
That's all the agenda for tonight.
Just on here again, inspection permit resources.
No, that's your update. Last meeting, it was decided to be.
Continue with Bureau Veritas.
Continue with Bureau Veritas.
So do we need to continue to have this on the reports?
No.
Okay.
We're supposed to have some workshops.
Yes.
Yeah, that's on down here. Okay, uh, police department. Well, we've got, talked to many, 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 many people, and I'm going to ask the audience here, if y'all know of anyone that might be interested in being a, that's already a policeman, being a chief for us, I'd appreciate you let us know, because we, we've got our feelers out everywhere trying to find someone. And the sheriff says it's really hard, even though they went up on their money, you know? So, if y'all know of anyone that might want to be a sheriff, I'm a sheriff. A chief here in this small little sleepy town, send them our way, please.
But they can't be free.
No, they cannot be free. They have to take money, if we, we have to pay. Okay, uh, there's also a thing I was talking to Jan about earlier, and that was, I had talked to Ms. Wilber, Wilberton, correct?
Wilber.
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 Uh, I think it was Friday, and she was telling me of a, a program called L.I.T.E. dot program, and it's assistance for the elderly and people low income, that maybe, you know, when, a lot of people might have their water meters, you know, we forgave them for that, but don't turn, you know, we don't want them turning on their water with their meter still leaking, because, you know, that won't work, they'll just get another high bill. But that would help them with their fixing, their water leaks, help them with food, help them with maintenance in their house, just about several different things she said, but I have not been able to Google this, this program that she's telling me about.
Could you repeat it again, please?
Yes.
L dot?
I dot, T dot, E dot, light. And the only thing I came up with was electricity, and of course, that's not what, I, I'm looking for something that will help the people in this town that doesn't have the money, and water has been turned off due to leaks, that maybe could get their leaks fixed, so that, you know, they can enjoy life again, you know? All right.
Before we move on, we go back to the public works.
Okay, well, you...
We, we really need everybody that is involved in a forgiveness to understand that once the meter's turned back on, it's on you. I mean, that's just the way it is. So, before your meter's turned back on, you may want to contact the city and say, hey, all my stuff has been repaired and it's ready, before it's done, instead of wait till after it's turned on and you got a puddle out in your front yard and you say, uh-oh. So, it's pretty important that, you know, that it can't go back after, after now. So, and the letters did not go out, I'm assuming?
Yes, they did.
They did.
That's all they did. They were with the bills like y'all were asked, like y'all asked.
Well, I think everybody was wondering because of that, they thought they would, everyone would get the letter, so I assume the only ones that got...
No, the only ones that got the letter were people who needed that forgiveness.
Mm-hmm.
We had sent it to, I mean, why would I...
Yeah, we weren't going to send it to everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, I have been approached, and people was wanting to know, hey, I didn't get a letter. Now, they don't owe anything, but assuming, they must have wanted to read the letter or know what was in it, I have no idea why they, they did that, but anyway. Over business, discuss and consider action on Mill and Richard Street repairs. We don't have to do that no more. It is done as of today. The, uh, the hole, or where it was going to cave in, has been dug completely out, it was between four and five foot deep, hadn't had water in it forever, they said. They put some kind of stuff in it that's filled it up, and each time they did it, they packed it down, then they put some more stuff on it and pack it down, and then the last couple of days, they let people drive on it, just to assure it. And then today, they went and they laid the rest of the asphalt, after they ground up the old asphalt. And then, I talked to Chuck, and he said that he's figuring on possibly Thursday or Friday coming out and doing the bar ditch, because the reason we need the bar ditch done on this side behind Leslie's property, you know, y'all all know where Leslie lives, all right, behind her property, that bar ditch, is because all the water will be going down that ditch for now on, and the, from Richard Street down, the water will be coming from Main Street or whatever, and then from Mill Street down, there's this other culvert on both sides, and it'd be the one that will be carrying, carrying all the water down to, I guess the creek is what I was told.
There's a pond down there.
Well, they call it...
Well, there was at one time, it's just like a little water hole now, but, and the old days, they made bricks from that pond with the mud.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Cool. And I was told that they're going to be taking up that big culvert on 34 over there by the creek pond, and I don't know, surely to goodness, they'll be putting another one in, I don't know why they're taking it out, you know, but that's what the county's doing.
I think it's because it's got a dip in it.
Oh, okay. All right, anybody have any questions? Okay, accounting software change for City Hall.
I'm making motions to table Mill Street, Richard Street repairs with no further action.
Why, why do we table it?
With no further action.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, now the accounting software change for City Hall. I assume it is the center point, correct?
Unless there's something else.
Got center point here, okay. Does anybody have any questions about the center point software?
Does the startup cost us 7920? Finning glue training?
Yes.
How much?
When they leave out of here, everything will be, they'll be able to do everything in the software that's needed when they leave here.
And anybody can be up here and...
And also, they have phone call, whatever, you have any issues or whatever, call them.
No additional costs?
No additional costs.
Okay. So, you know how much training you're going to get, or is it just until you're satisfied that you're training?
I've been told that they would be here one day.
One day, okay.
And we should know everything we need to know in one day. Which is doubtful. He said how much, Mr. Duckworth said how much it was cost, but I didn't hear it, how much is it?
Nothing, for the training.
Right, nothing for the training, but how much was the system?
7920.
Now, that versus what we have now, I talked to Brittany, I think's her name today, and we were discussing this, the software, and she told me that, now, we, when I talked to QuickBooks, they told me it would be, Todd, you was there too, was it five or eight thousand for another license, do you remember?
I don't remember. Five thousand for the last one, but then you had to put in a server.
But then we had to put in a server, and that's when the money really grows.
Unless you wanted to do the online version.
And she talked about the online version, and she says that's a monthly cost on that one, you know? So, anyway, she, I told her that there's a lot of trouble with the online getting help from QuickBooks when you need help. And with these, this particular company here, you supposedly can call them anytime and they'll help you, you know? I guess the proof would be in the pudding. But anyway, I want to know what, what do you think, Russell?
I mean, it's difficult for me to tell, with the exception of a different style of report, which we could modify in QuickBooks, what the value is. QuickBooks does fund accounting, QuickBooks couldn't be modified to run the report to look exactly like this, and my question is, what do we gain?
User.
A user? Who is that user?
It would be any of us.
No, or ma'am. It would have to be a designated user.
No.
Especially if it's, especially if that person has any kind of authority to change anything.
Okay, so you're, you're telling me that they're going to give us two users, okay? And if one of those users quit, then we just out of use?
No, all I'm saying is, if Dana's one of the users, and you're one of the users, then your user can't be used by anybody else, because then it looks like you doing it, and nobody can use Dana's except for Dana, because that looks like Dana's using it.
Unless that user is Chinese.
Yes. Well, so the, any of us can use it, explanation is not valid.
No.
One at a time, one person can be designated as that user.
Correct. But two people can.
Okay.
Because it's two users, okay? But at any point in time, that user can be changed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that user can go away, and another one...
So what's the purpose of that user? Is it going to be data entry, is it going to be reporting?
It can be anything. I mean, you can set that up however you want to.
I understand. That's true, in QuickBooks also.
No, I understand that. Our biggest issue is...
Support.
Support and user friendly, I guess you'd say.
And having to get another user to use it, you know, by what you call it server, because that's going...
Well, yeah, but that's, that entails in the user. With QuickBooks, we gotta, we gotta pay for the user and a server. With this one, we don't, we're just, we're getting a user. But as far as who can use it, basically whoever you designate as a user. I'm, I'm not saying you can, you're going to go in there daily and say, oh, Bob's going to do it today, and Dana tomorrow, and Joe the next day, no. I'm just saying, you're not, you're not stuck with two people, you know, it can be changed. It's not that somebody, if you, if you learned the system, and we already got two users, you can't go in there and go in on their syst, on their user ID, you know, you'd have to either get rid of one of the other ones and change it over or whatever.
Okay. So my last question is, how much have we budgeted, budgeted for the accounting system change this year?
Budgeted, not at all?
So zero?
Correct.
Well, I think though, even if we haven't budgeted for it this year, we will have to put out more money to keep QuickBooks, because we're going to have to be paying for another user, and we're going to have to be paying for a server. And we were told that the server was going to cost quite a bit of money, you know, so, you know, you're going to pay money either way.
And at this time, we got, we've got a assistant here that we're paying. Of course, it's part-time, but we are paying the assistant to be trained. At this point, the training, if it's any to being done, is useless, because it's not, it's not getting used. So, I mean, if we're going to continue this, and we're going to continue with an assistant, if we're going to have two users, we need to be able to train them.
And I also feel like that we need more than one person on there knowing what's going on in the city, money-wise, you know, because right now, as I talked to Brittany about, the way we wanted it set up to where we would understand what the money was going out and what money was coming in every month, still hasn't done it, and we've been aftering it for, ever since I've been there. I think it was hard paid before then. And I asked Brittany, just how hard is it to do this, what I'm asking, and I explained it to her, and she said, it's not hard at all. Either she doesn't want to do it, or she doesn't know how to do it.
Actually, it's already been done.
Where is it at?
It's on, it's on that computer. Are y'all wanting it for every, when are you wanting, like, y'all now asked me when y'all want this?
We told you we wanted it at every meeting.
Okay.
And you said it costs too many pa, uh, used too many papers or something like that.
We, no, that's not what was said. Y'all wanted, the way y'all originally were wanting it set up, now it's on an Excel spreadsheet in there.
For every bill that we have.
For every bill, for every month, yes. Well, hold on, not for every bill, for every account code that y'all have.
Okay, and we want it to see, we want to see if...
You wanted it comparative to the budget as to how much you've used and how much you have left, yes.
Then I would like to spend on...
Right.
Do what?
I said, what code it is spending on.
Mm-hmm. These, these codes on all...
Those associated with the payments.
Yes, okay.
So, anyway, that is what we are wanting, but nevertheless, we still need more than one person knowing how to do all of this, simply because if you quit, get mad and say, okay, I've had it, or if you get sick, or if you marry and move away, you know, nobody would know what was going on in QuickBooks but you. And that's why we, I think in closed session, we discussed this. Do y'all remember that?
Well, if we discussed it in closed session, it wouldn't be appropriate to talk about here.
Well, all you can do is just shake your head yes or no, you know? So, you know, that's what I'm talking about, is that we, we started this because we needed to get one more person in on it, you know, and that's when we discovered that we had to pay $5,000 for the one, I think it's for that one license, and it's one license, and then the server, because they will not give us the one license unless we put in a server, and that's what they said. And then Greg found this one that apparently doesn't require a server, you know? So, we're going to, like I said, we're going to be putting out money, it don't matter which direction you go, you know, but we, I really don't know why we would need a server, I'll be honest with you, because I just don't think the city is that big yet that it needs one. So.
Question, is this, is this cloud-based, the center point?
No. In-house.
So...
All data collection is in-house.
So it runs on a local computer? What about the second user?
It'll have to be incorporated with it.
Is it being backed up?
Yeah, I mean, you'll have to back it up on the, on the computer, yeah.
You can't back it up on the computer.
Why can't you?
We involve our accounting company in this conversation at all.
Do what now?
Have we talked to our accountants about this at all, if they've been...
I was talking to them today.
And they don't have any problem with Center Point?
No.
They know anything about it?
They, she didn't say yea nor nay or indifferent, because I told her that we were looking at changing it, you know, of course, she, we talked about the difference in price, we talked about, you know, why we were wanting it. No, she didn't, of course, they don't, you know, they use QuickBooks, and she said that, you know, but I think they seem to understand QuickBooks a lot better, you know, I don't know. So, like I said, all I'm interested in is something that we can get that we have two users. I thought it would be Debbie and Dana, and where we would not have to have a, oh, gosh, got it.
Server.
Yeah, and then also so that we can start knowing that if something happens, we have a backup person that can know what's going on. It's nothing against... One person can be designated as that user.
But two people can.
Okay.
'Cause it's two users, okay? But at any point in time, that user can be changed. That user can go away and another one-
So what's the purpose of that user? Is it gonna be data entry? Is it gonna be reporting?
It can be anything. I mean, you can set that up however you want to.
I understand. That's true in QuickBooks also.
No, I understand that. Our biggest issue is-
Support.
Support and user-friendly, I guess you'd say.
And having to get another user to use it, you know, what do you call it, server?
Well, yeah, but that's, that entails in the user. With QuickBooks, we gotta, we gotta pay for the user and a server. With this one, we don't. We're just, we're getting a user. But as far as who can use it, basically whoever you designate as a user. I'm, I'm not saying you can, you're gonna go in there daily and say, oh, Bob's gonna do it today, Dana tomorrow, and Joe the next day. No. I'm just saying, you're not, you're not stuck with two people. You know, it can be changed. It's not that somebody, if you, if you learned the system and we already got two users, you can't go in there and go in on their syst, on their user ID. You know, you'd have to either get rid of one of the other ones and change it over or whatever.
Okay. So my last question is, how much have we budgeted for the accounting system? Change this year?
Budgeted, not at all?
So zero?
Correct.
Well, I think though, even if we haven't budgeted for it this year, we will have to put out more money to keep QuickBooks, because we're gonna have to be paying for another user and we're gonna have to be paying for a server. And we were told that the server was gonna cost quite a bit of money, you know? So, you know, you're gonna pay money either way.
And at this time, we got, we've got an assistant here that we're paying. Of course, it's part-time, but we are paying the assistant to be trained. At this point, the training, if it's any to being done, is useless. Because it's not, it's not getting used. So, I mean, if we're gonna continue this and we're gonna continue with an assistant, we're gonna have two users, we need to be able to train them.
And I also feel like that we need more than one person on there knowing what's going on in the city money-wise, you know? Because right now, as I talked to Brittany about, the way we wanted it set up to where we would understand what the money was going out and what money was coming in every month, still hasn't done it. And we've been after it for, ever since I've been there. I think it was hard paid before then. And I asked Brittany, just how hard is it to do this? What I'm asking, and I explained it to her, and she said, it's not hard at all. Either she doesn't wanna do it, or she doesn't know how to do it.
Actually, it's already been done.
Where is it at?
It's on, it's on that computer. Are y'all wanting it for every, when are you wanting? Like, y'all now ask me when y'all want this.
We told you we wanted it at every meeting.
Okay.
And you said it costs too many pa, uh, used too many papers or something like that.
We, no, that's not what was said. Y'all wanted, the way y'all originally were wanting it set up. Now, it's on an Excel spreadsheet in there.
For every bill that we have.
For every bill, for every month, yes. Well, hold on, not for every bill, for every account code that y'all have.
Okay. And we want it to see, we want to see if-
You wanted it comparative to the budget as to how much you've used and how much you have left.
Yeah. Okay. Then I would like it to span on.
Right.
Do what?
I said, what code it is span on.
What's it saying?
These.
These, these codes on all of it.
Those associated with the pages.
Yes.
So, anyway, that is what we are wanting. But nevertheless, we still need more than one person knowing how to do all of this. Simply because if you quit, get mad and say, okay, I've had it. Or if you get sick, or if you marry and move away, you know? Nobody would know what was going on in QuickBooks but you. And that's why we, I think in closed session, we discussed this. Do y'all remember that?
Well, if we discussed it in closed session, it wouldn't be appropriate to talk about here.
Well, all you can do is just shake your head yes or no, you know? So, you know, that's what I'm talking about, is that we, we started this because we needed to get one more person in on it, you know? And that's when we discovered that we had to pay $5,000 for the one, I think it's for that one license, and it's one license. And then the server, 'cause they will not give us the one license unless we put in a server. And that's what they said. And then Greg found this one that apparently doesn't require a server.
Right.
You know? So, we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna be putting out money. It don't matter which direction you go, you know? But we, I really don't know why we would need a server, I'll be honest with you. Because I just don't think the city is that big yet that it needs one. So- So, do you-
Question, is this, is this cloud-based, the CenterPoint?
No. In-house.
So-
All data collection is in-house.
So it runs on a local computer? What about the second user?
It'll have to be incorporated with it.
Is it being backed up?
Yeah. I mean, you'll have to back it up on the, on the computer, yeah.
You can't back it up on the computer.
But it'll-
Why can't you?
We involve our accounting company in this conversation at all?
Do what now?
Have we talked to our accountants about this at all? Have they been consulted?
I was talking to them today.
And they don't have any problem with CenterPoint?
No.
They know anything about it?
She didn't say yea nor nay or indifferent. 'Cause I told her that we were looking at changing it, you know? Of course, she, we talked about the difference in price. We talked about, you know, why we were wanting it. No. She didn't, of course, they don't, you know, they use QuickBooks. And she said that, you know, but I think they seem to understand QuickBooks a lot better. You know, I don't know. So, like I said, all I'm interested in is something that we can get that we have two users. I thought it would be Debbie and Dana. And where we would not have to have a, oh, gosh, God.
Server.
Yeah. And then also so that we can start knowing that if something happens, we have a backup person that can know what's going on. It's nothing against Dana at all. It's just, I think, good business to let everybody, I mean, one person in should not know everything about the town and the council not know nothing. That's what I'm talking about. So, Russell, do you have any other questions?
Well, I just, I think to characterize it as nothing is a little extreme since we get accounting reports every month that tell us the balances and the activity. So, you know, and this is, I guess, the core of my questions is, if it's gonna be Dana and Debbie that are the users on the system, then what more? This council doesn't get any greater access other than the reporting.
Well, I-
Which is what we get now.
Well, I hope, since Dana just informed me that, I know, we can't read it.
Can you read it?
No, we can't read it.
I, I was given those from Mr. Morris, so.
Okay. So, anyway, to where we can start seeing what each account that is written down in our accounts, how much money's there, how much money's been spent, and where it has went to. That's what I want to know. And so far, I do not know it.
Okay, so can I, I'm gonna, if you look at any of these, like, for instance, the general fund, this is, I think, what they're wanting ultimately. If you look like this one, I don't know what page this is, page 522 through the CenterPoint. And it's got, this is police department, it says ammunition and guns, and it says, this is how much we've allotted. This right now is so far how much we've actually spent. And it's line item breakdown of the telephone, then you see computer service and maintenance and those types of things. It's, it breaks it down more than what-
QuickBooks has.
QuickBooks does. QuickBooks just kinda like general codes, has general codes, so.
And this way you'll know where the money's going to.
Right. And that's exactly what we need to know.
Instead of to a code.
Right. But ultimately, I think too, we need to understand that any checks or anything that's written, there's two signatures on those. It's not like one person is just writing checks willy-nilly.
That's right.
I'm signing them in my areas, right.
I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is this breaks it down to-
Mm-hmm.
I paid George $50.
Right, or this is how much-
And then other one goes to a code, well, it's a code for it.
Right.
It's in the general ledger, but we don't know if it was George's money or Bob's money.
Right. And it's cheaper.
That's the whole point of breaking it completely down.
It will be a lot cheaper when you-
But we only have one user.
Yeah. And it will be a lot cheaper without investing in a server.
But we also, we also have this, so whenever they do come in and set this, if and when they do come in and set this up, anybody can be there when it's going on. If you want some knowledge of how this system operates, be there. At any point in time, if we do lose somebody or whatever, at least we could be maybe of some help once another person is hired or whatever. 'Cause we'll have a little bit of knowledge on what's going on. And then we know how to contact the company that provides the support also. So, I mean, I just, I, I think it's a win-win, but.
I, I can tell you that I've received reports out of QuickBooks that have that level of detail on it. It's got the current activity and year-to-date activity and the budgeted amount, the percentage of budget that's been used, the reports data. So if that's the reason we're doing it, it's, it's not compelling. If the reason that we're doing it is 'cause we need another person to do data entry, because the volume of data is significant, then that's compelling. But I don't, if, council should not have their hands inside the accounting data. They should be looking and auditing around the data.
Council isn't gonna be having their hands in it. Council is wanting to make sure that we know what's going on. And we want to know where the money's going, and we also know that we need two people taking care of it. Dana's had a sick spell there for a while, but she hasn't here lately. But if Dana's out, that means Debbie could get in there and do the work. And that's what I'm looking for. Okay, Debbie, what is, what's your concerns?
Debbie has to go under Dana's name at this point to do this.
No, she doesn't go on it.
Well, she can't get into it.
Uh-uh.
Right.
Right.
No. I'm not giving up my username and password.
And I get that, I get that. Because whatever she goes in there and changes, it's gonna be against you.
Correct.
That's what they were saying, that they needed something else to have her own sign in. So she can get in there and do what she needs to do.
Do you have any other concerns?
Well, that's my main concern is that we get a report that prints out what we need to know.
Well, we've been after it since day one.
And you've been there now.
Okay. Deesha, do you have concerns?
Nothing is already been stated. But I'm like, Russell, none of us need to be in, be able to go in there because-
Why would we? Why would we? It should be the two people that is designated to be there, not anybody else. I mean, you don't want nobody in your files.
No.
Well, I can tell you, so technically, there is an administrator account in that quicken file. And that should not be one of the, one of the city staff. That should be a protected administrative account that the mayor has the password for. So that if there's an issue where somebody leaves and we need access to it, the mayor's got the authority to go in and change that user. Or your designated. So it's not like Dana, if Dana decided to, well, she won the lottery and would prepare us.
But she left us a bunch of this, the town?
Yeah, yeah. It wouldn't, we wouldn't be locked out of QuickBooks. Like, she don't know the admin password.
Are you saying dream on?
Yeah, I was nervous.
No? Okay. I understand that point. Kenny, do you have any concerns?
No, I don't hear y'all in a second.
Okay.
I, I just wanna make one thing clear. When I was saying that we can be here through the process of installing the software, I'm not saying we need access to this. But if there's questions that come about, maybe we could help with some of the answers if we knew a little bit about what the heck's going on. I mean, when you have, it, it's no difference if, if we got QuickBooks now, and I was a proficient QuickBooks person, you know, and they had a question about something, or if I wanted a specific report, I could say, hey, this is what I want. And I'd know about kinda what I was talking about. And if we learned it a little bit ahead of time, I think it's a good thing. Not that we need to be involved in the software, absolutely not. That is not, not where I was going with it. You've got two, two users and they are to handle the day-to-day business, period. And then if something happens, then mayor takes the user information and takes care of that, so. That's all I have.
Okay, got a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion, we accept the CSA software installation.
Do I have a second?
Not a second.
Okay, Russell, how about?
No.
Debbie? Deesha?
I just don't know.
Can we come back?
I know we need a second, I know we need a second user, but same time, I can't see spending that much money on this one when we don't know how much the server costs. For one thing.
We only got that price too.
How much?
It was eight thousand total.
The server was eight thousand?
Yes.
Yeah.
We've already priced that. But it can go up higher. Right, Todd?
Easily.
Yep. Depending on the kinda server you get, right?
Right now, they're about double the price they were six months ago.
And what is that?
An average server right now is about 12 to 16 grand.
12 to 16?
And that's on top of that seven, nine, 12?
No.
Uh-uh.
No, that's completely separate.
That's-
That's if we went, if we stay with QuickBooks.
We'll, we'll have to pay $5,000 for the other user plus the server. And that's QuickBooks telling us we have to do that.
$8,000.
Plus, you gotta have backups and you have to have somebody that can administer the server, 'cause it didn't just sit there and run by itself.
Intuit QuickBooks Desktop Pro plus 2022, two-user, one-year, $390.99.
A year?
Okay, I'm just reading it off their website.
Well, don't believe what you read, 'cause he was here when we, I was talking to them.
Okay.
He is in Todd. So, anyway. All right, you say it. Who's voting?
Deesha.
Deesha. Deesha.
I was saying.
That's saying. So what is it? Two?
It doesn't have a majority.
No.
People, I'm gonna tell you something. We have tabled this and tabled this and tabled this.
We didn't table it, we just voted it down.
Yes, but wait a second. We are going to have to make a decision on this. Either you're gonna want to go and pay the $5,000 plus for the server, or you're gonna want to go with this other company. We do need Debbie on the, as a user. And having one person as a user running the town, I'm sorry, I'm not for that. And this has nothing to do with Dana. It just means that we have one person that knows everything that's going on in town, the rest of us know nothing. So, I really wish that y'all would get together and decide what y'all are gonna do, which way either, keep, keep QuickBooks and spend all the money, or go with this other company. Amen. I don't have a second.
This is not tabled?
This is not tabled.
No, it's, it's tabled.
I get it, I get it. I get it.
Tabled. Okay. The quote for 228 Patterson Water Group replaced manhole at 301 McFarland. We're not replacing the manhole. We're gonna close it up. And Brent said that they would be out here either Thursday or Friday to take care of it. And it will, only a thing that we will have to pay for is, of course, parts and time. It's nowhere 8,000 or nothing. He said, won't even be nowhere like that, that it was. So, that's good news. Okay, approve 20?
So do we have, do we have an estimate? We need to approve it?
No. No, there is no estimate. He, he just told me today that, let's see. They're gonna clean out the manhole hard. It was hard, will not be expensive, and, and there is no quote. And he said we would be paying for just the parts and labor.
It would basically be like if they were coming out to repair a sewer leak or a water leak. It's the $50 an hour plus any parts.
Okay.
And they're going to be closing that manhole altogether.
We still have access to anything that we need via other manhole measures?
Okay. Okay, does anybody have, want to make a motion on this?
Make a table. Without follow-up.
Do I second it? Do, do we need a second for that? Okay, who wants to second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Approve 2023 joint election agreement between City of Ladona and Fenndale ISB.
Make a motion to approve the joint election agreement for May 6, 2023.
Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Set workshop date for City of Ladona permit fees. Do we have a calendar?
23rd is next Monday, 30th is next. And we get in February.
Nobody has a date that they want to put out?
I'm probably good with any date you like.
You're good with any date?
Yeah, 23rd or 30th is fine.
Okay. It doesn't matter if it's the 23rd or 30th, then I'll just put it on the 23rd.
We got three of them. Get in before the next meeting if we can.
Right. So do we have a motion?
Make a motion to set the workshop- 2023 at 7:00 p.m.?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we need to set a workshop date for City of Ladona ordinance workshop.
We need to tie it with that one?
That's what I'm wondering too.
Well, remember, he has-
I know.
Okay. 'Cause he's busy on Monday, Tuesday, and seems like there's another day that he has, that he goes to.
So do we need to contact him for a date?
Yeah, I guess we could.
Could we, could we see about maybe a Saturday? Is that okay with us?
That's fine with me.
Anything else fine with you? Is Saturday okay?
No.
No. I'd say.
Okay. Saturday's a hell.
Any other days that's not good? So do we wanna set it for, say? He's busy on Mondays, right?
Every Monday. And I don't know about the fourth Monday. But I know he's busy on the first three, that's why we had to go to three.
Maybe he's not busy on the fourth.
That's what I don't know, 'cause I don't remember saying anything about the fourth.
Can we set it for the 30th pending-
Hamilton.
The attorney presence?
And that'd be the fifth.
Have no problem with that.
Quite clear.
Okay. 30th at 7:00 p.m.? Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Debbie, second it? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Set workshop date for City of Ladona planning and zoning workshop.
I think you really need somebody here for that one too.
That's why, I knew you was gonna say that.
Can both of you get on the same day?
You know, I wonder if we could do that.
You could, you can.
Yeah.
You're gonna limit yourself, 'cause you're gonna have to do probably one at 6:00 and one at 7:00.
You're gonna have to have one, one meeting of each one anyway, so.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
I know. But, I mean, I just don't know how much progress you're gonna make or what progress you'll make in an hour, but.
Well, I mean, that's basically what we allocate for them anyway, but.
Set it for the thirtieth at six. Second.
So we're going to do two in that one day? Was that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second? All right, Debbie?
Russell's seconded.
Oh, Russell's seconded, yeah. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At four thousand overage for repair of sinkhole on Mill in Richard. I don't know exactly what we're gonna.
After talking, I mean, I'm sorry, so, after speaking with all of y'all, they're, they're not a hundred percent sure to be up to four thousand dollars. And this wasn't discussed earlier, but the mill, that sinkhole there was covered underneath that grant. They came out because there was extra funding left in that grant. And that's when they came forth and, and they went ahead and went on down Mill Street some more. This was in part of what they were gonna do.
The funding was gonna go away though.
But if, yes, if we did not get it, if we didn't get everything finalized by January thirtieth, we'd lost that money.
So everything has to be found, unless by the thirtieth.
So there is a possibility that we will receive a bill for up to four thousand dollars for the materials that were put into that sinkhole. It would be part of your own budget.
I mean, it was a, it was a public hazard main thing. It had to be done, but still, I understand, you know, where is the money gonna come from?
Yeah, that's my point.
Yeah. Can I check book?
I got one, but what good is it? It's a blank account.
So you have a bar goes.
Hey, heard it, we're being it's on bounce.
So no other options on that? That's the, that's the option.
That is, yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve up to four thousand dollars for repair of sinkhole and building.
Second.
All in favor? Greg, did you say?
Aye.
Okay, scheduled date for spring cleanup.
We don't have a spring this year.
Hope you.
Hope we can.
Have it now.
Give it a couple of days.
Yeah. Couple of days spring is about to.
We normally have it, you know, July ninth.
It's, it is, yes. It was. Yeah, it's usually like around the twenty-second, that's Saturday, and then we run it until, yeah, like third, fourth of August. First week in May, which is May sixth. It's about two weeks long.
Okay, so the date would be?
If we stay on track, it'd be April twenty-second through May the sixth. Do we, do we have a tentative date for twenty mile brush sale?
It's.
May the sixth.
May sixth.
Well, that would work in pretty good.
I'm not even like, you know.
Same day as election day.
Yeah.
Never be.
That would not work.
No, I agree. Let's not do it that way.
They used to do election day on market days, so people would come to market and have a vote.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that we have no, the twenty mile brush sale be on the sixth and, and the election, we have no control over. The only thing we have control over is cleanup, the dates.
Does anyone else have another date?
People's only there about six anyway.
I mean, it's, it's usually, I mean, usually that first week it's so full, right.
Anything in there? Or they just come bring one?
We usually purchase two, or we have it set up when we do two. They do the first one, then they, as soon as it's at full, we call them, they come pick it up, take it away, and they bring a second one.
Okay, do I have a motion? The date would be fourth and twenty-second through fifth and sixth.
Salute.
What'd you say?
Salute. April twenty-second through May sixth.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I assume that's the option. Does anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Yes.